For the Planning Commission, October 12, 2017. And let it, we'll go ahead and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic to which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Let it be known that all commissioners are present. Commissioner Bichelli is absent today. He announced that at the last meeting. Okay. And there is no consent agenda items today, so we will go into, or there's no agenda changes?
No.
No, they're not.
Okay, thank you. So we'll go right into the public hearings, and it looks like the first one on the list is going to be 201-
Do you want to do a public comment?
Yes. I'm sorry. Well, you are important, we do want to hear from you. So we'll go into public comment now for anybody that would like to speak on items that are not on the agenda. See, I had that second sense. Okay. Okay, so now we will go to 2017-075. Gina, it looks like you're going to be doing the presentation on that one for us.
Yes.
We're going to silence phones, right? Thank you. Make sure mine is.
I thought I was getting bumped, so I have to apologize. Yes.
Okay. As mentioned before, project number 2017-075 is a zoning amendment for Mr. Mark Bolger. The subject property is located on two legal parcels over off of Banner Road, just a half mile east of South Railroad Flat Road and Banner Road intersection in between the communities of Mountain Ranch and Railroad Flat. There's an aerial photo of the property. This is a zoning amendment. As I said before, there's two contiguous parcels totaling 118 acres. The request is to change the zoning from the interim zone district unclassified to the resource zone A1 general agriculture. Currently, the parcel is zoned unclassified, which is an interim zone. The unclassified is applied to lands until more precise zoning is adopted. It was kind of one of the original zonings in the county along with highway service. Basically, everything along the highway was zoned HS. Everything else was zoned unclassified until otherwise specified. So we kind of refer to it as a holding zone. The proposed zoning is A1 general agriculture, which is a resource zone. It is our main resource production zone, which is to classify areas for general farming and ranching practices where agriculture is the primary emphasis of the property with an actual right to farm unlike other zones that are not in that resource designation. Currently, the general plan land use designation is a natural resource land designation. It's labeled as wildlife botanical. In this particular case, it is specifically due to wildlife and particularly the migrating Railroad Flat deer herd. So up in this area, there is land that is known for the migration of the deer herd that is, needs to be protected, and this parcel happens to be located within that area of land in our county. So the Railroad Flat deer herd is sensitive to human encroachment. One of the reasons why they've designated this land, they've actually applied a 50-acre minimum parcel size to wildlife botanical areas, and that is to eliminate the possibility of smaller land divisions. Loss of habitat could be through building and development. Again, natural resource, unlike perhaps maybe a community service or a residential designation, would eliminate the possibility of small parcel-sized land divisions, which then, of course, would bring additional people and more buildings. So the general plan actually indicates, obviously, they don't want development in these areas of any significant size, so the general plan does call out farming and ranching as well as timber practices, all compatible uses in the natural resource wildlife botanical areas of our county. This being that these particular uses preserve open space and obviously minimize residential In addition, not that we're making a finding of consistency, but just so that you know, since we are in the middle of a general plan update, the future general plan has this slated as resource production. Here's a copy of the land use map. All of the little crosshatch color to the, to the right of the screen happens to be the wildlife botanical designation. Oddly enough, the, the yellow happens to be future single-family residential. I'm not exactly sure what the little two, two parcels of timber land is doing in the middle of all that, but that's what our general plan looks like today. Just some more details under the general plan. Water's always a concern. This property happens to be designated as having moderate to high groundwater potential. There's currently two wells on site with a pond, an undeveloped spring, and a tributary to Jesus Maria Creek. Much like the rest of Calaveras County, at least most of the land up in this particular area, happens to be located in a very high fire hazard. Lots of flammable vegetation, such as annual grasses, blue oak woodland, hardwood, manzanita, and mixed chaparral, for which this parcel actually has all of this. Here's a copy, a picture of the undeveloped spring on the property, in addition to the spring-fed pond on the property. And it might be a little hard to see, but this is a picture of the, of the tributary to Jesus Maria Creek, which happened to be dry the day that I was there. Talking about vegetation and, and all of the fire fuels that are out there, this is a good example of what's on the property that needs to be maintained. We'll get back to that a little bit further in the presentation, but this is not typical of the entire property, but there is, there is quite a bit of this kind of scenery, this kind of vegetation existing on the land today. So when we talk about compatibility with surrounding areas, there's thousands of acres surrounding this parcel in that general area that are designated and restricted by the Williamson Act currently, which you know is our, is our ag preserve and is maintained for agricultural purposes, and, and folks that enter into contract with us have to maintain their property in agriculture. They do annual monitoring and submit actual production records to our ag commissioner, which verifies their agricultural viability of the land. In addition, there's hundreds of acres around the property that are utilized for more small-scale ranching and farming practices. There happens to be Al Roffik cashmere goats just around, just over on the other side of the hill. There's, there's all kinds of other smaller ranches with cattle and sheep and, and goats and whatnot, but if you look at the land, that's the primary use, small residential and small farming, in addition to the larger acreage farms that we, ranches that you have out there. Zoning surrounding areas are ag preserve, general agriculture, residential agriculture, and some rural residential, in addition to some of those parcels that are still zoned Here's just an illustration of the actual ag preserve land that's surrounding the parcel. So right there in the, in the middle of the, in the middle of that map, you'll see I've designated the location of the subject property. Everything in green is, is currently in the Williamson Act. So right now, the parcel is in agriculture production. There is cattle that are being run on the ranch. In addition, the property owner wishes to diversify his agricultural operation by possibly including grapes, maybe some fruits and nut trees at some point in the future, but the general ag zoning really opens up the door and allows for all sorts of agricultural uses and, and supportive uses to that ag operation. Back in 2005, the county, if you recall, did a comprehensive revision of the resource designations, or resource zonings, I should say, which included ag preserve, A1, which is general ag, residential ag, and we included rural residential in that, which basically redefined agriculture in Calaveras County. So prior to that revision, we had basically two uses. You had accepted farming and ranching practices, and you had what we considered commercial agriculture. Well, the commercial agriculture definition was very vague. It basically said, "Any agriculture production earning $2,000 or more, you're considered commercial ag." So in that rewrite, we actually eliminated the term "commercial agriculture," and if you know the code today, it actually replaced "commercial agriculture" with a whole variety of new defined permitted uses to assist agriculturists in our county to expand and, and, and have a viable actual, viable agricultural business and utilize their land. So again, it provided them more opportunity in retail trade, recreational and educational, as well as agricultural services and businesses, and those did not exist prior to 2005. Here's a photo, again, you're, it's very difficult to see unless this picture was blown up, but we discovered there is evidence of a prior orchard on the property, so in addition to, in addition to cattle grazing and at one point sheep and goats on the property, there was evidence that there was an actual orchard on site as well. So we did do an initial study, which found a negative declaration on the zoning amendment, finding no significant, significant effects on the environment. That document was circulated for 20 days, for which we received no comment from either the public or any agency. So in conclusion, the general ag zone is consistent with your general plan, compatible with your surrounding area, encouraged by the general plan and the zoning code, consistent with the general plan update, and allows more opportunity to utilize your land in addition to protecting our wildlife. So staff's recommendation is to approve the zoning and the negative declaration. Send it on up to the board with your recommendation for approval.
Does anybody have any questions at this time, or would you like to hear from the applicant?
I have a couple. The initial study that we got in the packet was missing every other page, but Planning sent each of the commissioners a complete initial study, correct?
Yes, yes.
So we do have that.
Everyone received a complete initial study, and it had to do with the way, we had scanned it correctly, we had it posted, but for some reason, every time Annette went to post it, it was posting every other page, and we didn't catch it until, obviously, just last week, when someone had brought it to our attention, but the document that was circulated was the full, complete document.
And each of the commissioners received it?
Yes.
Could the applicant have diversified ag operation with the unclassified zoning?
The unclassified zone currently permits accepted farming practices. I guess to some extent, you could say that, you know, farming is farming, but in the case that we had general accepted farming practices and a definition called "commercial agriculture," "commercial agriculture" was really that, 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 that use that defined the difference between a personal farm, sized farm, and a true commercial-sized farm or ranch. With the elimination of the commercial ag use from that A1 zone and all the other resource zones, that would lead you to believe that the definite, the, the meaning of, of accepted farming practices is just for personal use. So to some extent, yes, he could, but it really prevents the owner from expanding that use into all of the other uses that are allowed in conjunction with a bona fide ag operation.
I have a question. On page nine of the initial study, why, there's a statement that expected 150 vehicles per day, if I've read it right, and I, that just, I'm wondering if that's a typo?
150? I'm sorry, what page is that?
Page nine. Considering the analyzed project at 150 vehicle trips per day fell so far below the thresholds that is estimated, it just-
No, so what we had to do with this was, we didn't have, we didn't have the ability to specifically analyze this project as, as described. We didn't have access to the, to the, to the previous urbanist version that we had access to. So what we did was, we actually used, we compared it to another project that we had actually, that we had actually used that formula for.
So you're, you're assuming even if you had 150 trips a day-
Right. Exactly. Which obviously is not going to happen. I, I don't think we need to further explain that, but 150 trips will definitely not be occurring at that particular site with this use, and that's why we use that threshold to basically demonstrate that-
If that wouldn't be a significant effect, what, okay.
Right, exactly.
On the Railroad Flat herd, currently, is, is the property fenced, the perimeter of the property?
The perimeter is fenced with regular wire cattle fencing, and there are cattle that are being grazed on the property currently.
And is, do any, are any restrictions built in so that, that the Railroad Flat herd will not be obstructed from its normal transit of this property, presumably, it comes across?
Well, we don't have the ability to condition a zoning amendment, but if you would like to maybe perhaps talk to the property owner about his intentions for the property-
Sure, that's fine.
Um, beyond that, I'm not, I'm not sure how we can ensure that there won't be, say for instance, deer fencing on the, on the exterior.
Mm-hmm, okay.
I think that would be a little, I don't, I don't know of anyone who's going to want to deer fence 118 acres. That's pretty excessive, and I think that would be very costly.
Yeah, I'm thinking more of the crops being grown inside-
Right.
Would have deer fencing and-
Right. But even if you-
Well, I'll, I'll talk with the-
Sure.
The owner, that's great.
Commissioner Sisk, did you have any questions?
So, just real quick, on the, on the resolution, it talks about Mark Bolger being landowner
and applicant?
Yes.
And then on the negative declaration, it has Mark Bolger as the applicant and the landowner as Stephen and Annabella Wolf?
Let me explain.
Okay.
When the application came in, when Mr. Bolger applied for the zone change, he didn't own the property. In the, in the midst of this process, he actually closed escrow and now has title over the land.
Okay. And the property is not currently in a Williamson Act, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And we're not abandoning the lot line, there, he's zoning both parcels?
He's zoning both contiguous parcels.
Okay. Those are my questions. So, Mark, would you like to come up and give your presentation? Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners.
So just for the record, you get 15 minutes on your presentation, and I want to make sure, because last week, we had someone that didn't realize that.
I appreciate that, I don't think I need near that much time.
We'll keep you there that long.
Verbosity is not a virtue in my book, especially when there's many folks here that need to get on with their day. So, anyway, thank you guys for the ability to present this to you. I don't feel the need to reiterate the report that Planning has already done. I think the merits of this project speak for themselves pretty well. I would like to make myself available for any questions that you folks have. Also, if I could submit this-
Did you make copies for the public as well?
I did not. I'm more than happy to, if anyone in the public wants a copy. That's everything I've got. All that is, is a, a project analysis from a aerial imagery company that came and flew drones over, just to basically help identify possible land uses. So it's a short report. The second page just has a diagram map that shows the topography, as well as established grazing areas and any commercially viable timber, which is very sparse.
You ready for questions?
I am more than ready.
Okay. The Railroad Flat herd, that's a-
I'm going to interrupt you for just a second. Is there anybody in the public that would like a copy, then we can make sure that you get one? Yeah, I figured Colleen would like a copy.
Colleen, can you have mine? Thank you, I'm sorry for interrupting.
No problem. It would be remarkable if you could somehow obstruct the Railroad Flat herd from coming through this large parcel of property, but I just, I, I'd just like a statement as to what, what your plans are as far as, I know you don't know exactly what you're going to be doing with it, but if you are growing some crops that will need protection from deer, how are you going to make sure that there's still a corridor for the deer to get through?
So, as Gina stated, you know, there is a five-wire fence around the perimeter of the property. Some of it is in disrepair, which actually, to correct myself from previously stating, I have an agricultural lease with someone that's going to be grazing it. We actually didn't pull the trigger just yet, because we've got to mend some fencing. If I was to fence off any areas with deer fencing of a greater height, it would be, you know, minimal amounts. It definitely wouldn't be the perimeter of the property.
And you would just keep in mind the need for this herd to go through?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Well, the trails doesn't need to be on your property, correct? So you know, you know where the trail is that they use to access crossing the property?
Yeah, there's some pretty defined trails.
I know, we worked on the general plan, it was very defined as where those trails cut through, so-
Can I have your mic on, Lisa? I'm not going to hand it on. Thank you.
Sorry. Ooh, I didn't get the ugly eye across the room. Anyway, so what I was just saying is that those were pretty defined trails, so you would know where they are, and you can see where the herd's going through, because the brush has knocked down to a trail.
Definitely.
Okay, great, thanks. Nothing else?
Except I want to commend Gina for another great job on this. Very thorough, very professional.
Commissioner Wooster, do you have questions?
Do you have any recommendations yet from the experts you're talking to about what to do with this ground?
In terms of what crops it would be suitable for? I have not, so I've got some soil tests in with Fruit Growers Labs right now. I've taken some in the grazing area, just various samples from around the property. I should know within the next week or two. Obviously, it's been used for dry grazing, for, the family that I purchased this from, the Wolf family, had it since the 1930s, and prior to that, it had been cleared. So we're thinking for about the last 100 years or more, it's been used for grazing. So I don't have any definite plans right now. The immediate future would definitely be cattle and, you know, whatever crops are viable. I'm, I'm sure, you know, grapes, peaches, walnuts, I'm sure we'll find something. The soils there is pretty good. It's got a good couple feet of topsoil.
Is there, is there quite a bit of open ground around your property the deer could migrate through?
So to the north, there's roughly 1,000 acres. It's the old Bossy Ranch. There's 200 acres that's in the agricultural preserve, and then you can see that directly to the north and northeast, and then the large tracts that are not in the Williamson Act, I believe that's roughly 800 acres in the Esperanza Valley there. There's commercial cattle operations on that right now. Everything to the north there is very open. This parcel has quite a bit of open ground as well. The, I believe it was the railroad fire in the, or Warregard Fire in the early, mid-'80s went through there, so there's quite a bit of ground that's been, you know, overtaken by brush and whatnot, but, yeah, free movement of the herd's definitely not a problem.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Sisk?
Yeah.
Okay. Then I think we're done asking you questions, and we'll go to public comment.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any public comment on this? Good morning. For the sake of Annette, if you wouldn't mind signing your name, we'd appreciate it.
Oh, sure.
Obviously, you don't have to, but we do appreciate it when you do.
Jed Richardson, President of the Calaveras Wine Grape Alliance. I just wanted to stress the importance of rezoning of unclassified properties in this county, and particularly those suitable for agricultural production. Those, that priority really should be at the top of the agenda to ensure our county's continued viability, economic viability. We cannot wait for the general plan to be approved potentially years from now, for landowners to realize their highest and best use for their properties. Yeah, well, hopefully not, but-
Right.
Yeah, but we've waited a while so far, yeah. And then the property should be producing income for their owners and taxes for the county. Landowners like Mr. Bolger should be, who take the initiative and absorb the cost of getting ahead of the curve regarding the general plan, should be applauded and supported in their efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment? Good morning.
Good morning. Colleen Platt with MyValleySprings.com. We would like to speak in support of this zoning amendment. We support the rezone of all the unclassified parcels in the county. I believe there's, what, 5,850, was that what you said at the last minute?
Five, five thousand, 600 or something, yeah.
Something, something pretty incredible like that, as that was originally supposed to be a holding or an interim zone until rezoning. So, you know, they all need to be rezoned, so the sooner we can get started on that, on that progress, the better, because the general plan, we don't have to wait for all 5,000. So this, as long as they're consistent with the general plan land use map, and as long as they're obviously consistent with the future land use map too, this seems to be consistent with both of those, for natural resource land and future resource production. And since the historical use of this land was for grazing for livestock, and current use is the same, and it's surrounded by lands in agricultural production, in ag preserve and small farming, it seems to be very consistent with all the uses around it, and a good fit, a good fit for these parcels. And it would also allow the owner to expand the uses to more opportunities for commercial uses and commercial services, so it just seems like a very good fit in all directions, so we support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period and bring it back to the Commissioners for deliberation. Want to start at that end of the table?
I have no problems at all with this.
Okay.
Nor do I.
Nor do I, so I guess we would like to have the resolution read.
Staff recommends that the Planning Commission pass a motion approving Resolution 2017-068, recommending the Board of Supervisors adopt the negative declaration and approve the zoning amendment from unclassified to A1 for APNs 20- and approve the zoning amendment from unclassified to A1 for APNs 20, 031, 002, and 003.
Thank you.
I have one typo on the resolution.
Oh.
Page two of the resolution, right before paragraph three, acres should be acres.
Thank you. I'll make that correction and bring it back for signature.
Oh, thank goodness.
Can I get a motion to approve as amended?
I saw move.
Second somewhere?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 4-0. With one absent. Thank you. Have a good day. I wasn't telling you you had to leave.
Get me back to work.
Okay. Okay. Next item on the agenda is going to be item number two, 2016462. And Madeline, it looks like you're gonna be our presenter for that one.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Madeline Flandreau, Planner Two. I'm presenting Appeal 2016-462 for John Mendoza and SJHM Association. The parcel 054-004-061 is located at 2539 Horseshoe Road in Copperopolis. It's the five-acre parcel that you see highlighted in red just north of Highway 4, southwest of Copperopolis. The reasons for denial, Mr. Mendoza was denied for grading after May 10, 2016 for failure to provide adequate evidence of cultivation, false or misleading information, and cultivating within the 75-foot setback. For the first item, grading after May 1, 2016... Sorry, that should be May 10, 2016. A cleared area of approximately 6,000 square feet. I do not have the laser pointer. I apologize. An area that was cleared sometime early in 2016, approximately 6,000 square feet and square footage can be seen in the northern portion of the parcel. This is our county aerial imagery taken from June 3, 2016. You recall this denial, I'm sorry, the appeal that we had about a month ago, I believe, for the adjacent parcel to the north here. This, again, grading after May 10, 2016, no cultivation existed on the parcel in question on 054-004-061. This image is from August 20, 2016. That shows indeed there was no cultivation on the parcel. And then, our aerial imagery from June 1, 2017 indicates an area, a cultivation area of approximately 10,000 square feet, which is now visible in the area where the 6,000... Of course, this isn't gonna work on me now, but there it is. Where that 6,000-square-foot area was previously cleared. And I'm just zooming in and showing you. Clearly, there was grading clearing, some sort of expansion going on here. And just to remind you, Calaveras County Public Works Grading Drainage and Rosen Control Design Manual states, defines grading and grading activities as "all earth-moving activities, including clearing, grading, excavation, fill placement, and stockpiling of earth and materials, including any combination thereof." The second reason for denial, failure, second and third, failure to submit adequate evidence of cultivation and false and misleading information. The applicant submitted a site plan with their registration paperwork depicting an area that was 21,000 square feet in area for cultivation that was located 75 feet from the property boundaries. In addition, there was a photograph that was submitted with the application showing a cultivation area. And I just wanted to zoom in. This is where we state in combination of with the site plan, the false and misleading information. You can clearly see there, there's about one, two, three, four, five long rows of pots, which is clearly a photograph of this cultivation area located on the northern parcel. The last item, cultivation is located within the 75-foot setback. From what I understand, after Carolyn Moat did her inspection, there was some confusion about relocating the grow. But Mr. Grant Lewis, who is the landowner who Ms. Moat was in communication with, apparently defined the property boundary himself and then relocated the grow on to 054-004-061. However, you can see the cultivation area is crossing the property boundary, and I know there can be a little bit of an issue with exact placement of the property line with regards to our GIS, but it's very, very close. So, the fact that it's completely crossing the property boundary, I don't see how we could be, not be within the 75-foot setbacks. On October 9, I believe, all the commissioners received a copy of the communication from Adrian Lambie with Archer Norris, who's the counsel for Mr. Mendoza. Did everybody get that? Okay. Mr. Lambie states in his letter that Code Compliance Officer Carolyn Moat was in communication with Mr. Grant Lewis via telephone and email in February of 2017 and that she understood that the property boundary had been defined and that he was going to relocate the grow in order to accommodate the 75-foot setbacks. However, the urgency ordinance doesn't allow for relocation. It freezes all cultivation prior to May 10, 2016 to the status quo. The only proportional adjustment that's allowed is under... One, six, five, and seven? Chapter 17, 95165N7, which states that grading is allowed for proportional adjustments to comply with a 75-foot setback. So, if a garden had a few plants that was within the 75-foot setbacks, obviously, there is minimal grading that is allowed to accommodate that. It's really the registrant's responsibility to define the property boundaries when the Code Compliance Officers go out to inspect. So, it's very understandable that Ms. Moat had difficulty when she was doing her initial inspection and reinspection. And I believe Ms. Moat is here and she can answer any questions you have with regards to the initial inspection and any communication that she had with the registrant and the landowner.
In fact, I'd like to have Carolyn come up
Yep.
and explain what transpired at her initial visit and subsequent visit and what communication she had, both over the telephone and via email with the applicant.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Caroline Moat with Code Compliance. I went out on January 24 with Officer Davis to do the inspections on these two properties. It was not until we got back to the office that we realized that one grow site was on a completely wrong parcel. At that point, Officer Davis called and spoke to Mr. Lewis and explained to him what we thought was going on based on us looking at the aerial photos and that he had a grow on the wrong parcel. And she explained to him that he needed to locate the boundaries and before anything, before there was any change made, planning needed to be notified. When we, when we go out and do these inspections, anytime there's a question of moving anything grow-related, our advice is we always tell them to contact planning because our understanding of moving things is a little, has been a little limited. So, that's always, always what we recommend. On the 23rd, I had a phone conversation with Mr. Lewis. We talked about some of the issues that were on the other parcel that he was working on addressing. He also said he was, he was going to locate the property lines and that he would be making arrangements to move the grow site onto the other property. Once the property dried up, again, he was instructed to contact planning. And we made, we talked about code coming back out to the property to check once he had made corrections on the one parcel and he had located property lines. In March, I went back out to the property with Officer Minehart. The violations on the one parcel were still there. He had located, we spoke to a couple of young men who were living in a trailer out there, and they explained that the parcel lines had been located and showed us some flags in the ground. There was an area that Madeline pointed out that was cleared. It was just bare dirt. At that point, nothing had been moved, nothing. There was no fencing. There were no plants. There wasn't anything. When we left, before we left at that point, I explained to Omar, was one of the young men, that Mr. Lewis needed to, Mr. Lewis or Mr. Mendoza needed to be in touch with planning and get back in touch with us, and that was the last communication I had with anybody out there.
Caroline, when you initially visited the site, the grow site was entirely on the northern parcel?
Yes, that's correct.
So, they grew for an entire year with two rows on one parcel?
Yes.
Thank you, and if there's any questions for the commissioners, please feel free.
Yeah, I was, I was confused to start with here because the staff report had no mention of Code Compliance's involvement. And it was only when Mr. Lambie's letter came up that I got some sort of understanding of what was going on. Now, if I understand your presentation today, the 6,000 square feet that was cleared somewhere between March and June of 2016 is the area that currently has the grow on it. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, we don't know exactly when that grading happened. It may have been before May 10, 2016?
When the grading, the initial grading?
The grading for the area where the grow currently is.
The issue was that the original area was 6,000 square feet. This is 6,000 square feet. And this is 10,000 square feet.
Okay, okay.
So, the grading, the expansion from 6,000 to 10,000 happened sometime between...
After, yeah.
Right.
I understand, okay. But the picture that was submitted, which I don't think we had in our package, the picture that was submitted that showed the five rows and this sort of thing, that was an accurate picture of the inaccurately located grow that turned out to be on the other property. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then it's the planning departments. Let's assume the best of intentions right now and that they thought that that grow pictured was on the property that it was supposed to be on. If that's the case, why wouldn't the authorized, the authorization for grading to compensate for being within the 75-foot boundary apply? They're, they're way off. They're in another parcel. They're, but they're moving it to comply with the 75-foot boundary. Is that...
Right. This one gets a little tricky.
Yes.
So...
Maybe I can weigh in on this. So, in order to take advantage of that provision of the code, you have to show on your application, you know, where the current grow is, where it's not in compliance with the setback and the area of proportional adjustment, along with a grading plan to show that was what was going to be, gonna happen. That was not provided. All they did was show what was purportedly existing on the site, 22,000 feet of cultivation within the setback. And none of that existed.
Okay, that makes it a lot clearer. Now, what if, what if that, with that plan that they submitted, if it turned out that, and that they had the grow, say, where it ended up now? I'm kidding, hypothetically. If they did not know that they were violating the 75-foot, would they have been permitted to move it? I mean, it wouldn't have been in their application that they...
If it was not shown in the application, they would've just had to remove that portion of it. So, they would not, unless they provided in the application, they would not be able to do the proportional adjustment. They would just have to remove the non-compliant cultivation area.
And I guess on the, the planning department's... It's a... May 17, 2017, picture that actually has the grow. I just, the question, it would be where, where's the property line on that? I mean, I can kinda guess.
Tell me the date again of the image.
May 17.
He's referencing the Terra Server photos.
Oh.
Yeah, that, that does not show the property line 'cause it's just simply aerial imaging. The picture on the back side shows the approximate location of the property line.
Okay.
That's from our GIS data.
As far as you know, the property line goes through the grow.
It is probably within, I would say, 10 to 20 feet of that line.
And so, it's very clear to the planning department that it certainly is, the grow is not 75 feet away?
Yes, it's clear.
Well, these lines aren't exactly accurate. We know that. You can see on the map that the other geological, geographical features such as the road, the trails along the fence line indicate that that's fairly accurate.
And then, for Code Compliance. So, my understanding is you said to the people, you have, you, it was clear to you that the grow, as it first existed, was on the wrong parcel. Is that...
Once we got back to the office and took another look at the aerials, then it was clear to us that the grow was...
And so, basically, you told them you have to move, but you also need to talk with the planning department?
Contact planning, yes.
When you went back in March, could you see a difference in the move in 6,000 to 10,000 square feet? 'Cause that's kind of a pretty big discrepancy in size there going on.
When we had gone out there and done the original inspection, we hadn't gone up to that parcel of land. So, I hadn't seen the original cleared area.
Okay, all right, got it. That makes sense.
I'm not sure where we stand as far as what's been done with other growers. We have a situation now, apparently, the property line goes through the property. It goes through the grow. The grow is 4,000 feet larger than what the grading was, the pre-May 10 grading. Could, could this be cured? I don't know what, how much would be left if the grow were eliminated to comply with a 75-foot boundary and also contracted to meet where the 6,000-foot grading was done? I'm just kinda losing track of...
I think had they done that initially, we would have said that this would be in compliance. But the fact it's, you know, a year and a half later from when they submitted their application and they really made no attempt to comply with the provisions of the code, I don't know that curing it is a possibility in my mind at this point in time.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you.
I'd like to remind the commission also that they cultivated for an entire year with two grow sites on one parcel. I mean, had planning noticed that, this all would have been excessive canopy, it would have been, had it been removed and destroyed within 24 hours. And then this grow site upon which cultivation had never existed could not possibly have been approved. So I think they kind of have lucked out to have had a grow for two years on a parcel that where there was no cultivation.
Okay, Ms. Moat?
Yes.
As I understand it, the two grows that existed on your first inspection were both on the same parcel, correct? How far from the property line, as you then understood it, was the closest part of the grow?
It, it was not close enough for us to measure it. So it, from what we could tell, it looked, there was a post on the property that he thought was part of the property line. And, and that was kind of a best guess for Grant Lewis, and there was nothing, there was no reason to measure it. It was enough of a distance away that the grow that was on the complete wrong parcel didn't look close enough to that, that post. Now, like I said, we didn't, we didn't have the aerial maps when we were out there, and it wasn't until we got back that we looked at the aerial maps. But, but the, the setback issue, I, we didn't recognize as an issue when we were out there.
So, so on your initial visit, you, although you didn't have the property line exactly, it was your belief at that time that both grows were on the same parcel?
When we first went out there, no. We thought, we thought the grows were on two separate parcels. When we got back to the office and we looked at the overhead image, and we went, wait a minute, that's, that's both grows on the same parcel. Then, then we, then we figured out a little more what was going on and made contact with Mr. Lewis. And he said, well, okay, I need to, I need to verify where the boundary lines are.
Was, was Mr. Lewis or Mr. Mendoza told on your initial visit that one grow seemed to straddle the property line?
No. No, like I said, it wasn't until we got back to the office that we figured out there was, we were looking at a bigger issue with two grows on one parcel and not two grows on two separate parcels.
And when you look at the, this would be the June 1 aerial, you can see the property line going through the relocated grow. Now, understanding these lines may not be completely accurate, what's, what's the margin of error? How many feet off could it be?
That I don't have an answer to.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, I think if there's no further questions, I think what we'll do is go to Mr. Archer and let him do his presentation. I might need you to stay.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think you just promoted Mr. Lambie to the whole row.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I do wish I was Mr. Archer.
I'm sorry.
He's on, he's on a tropical island somewhere.
That would be the only reason you'd want to be him, right? Because you don't want the bills.
Exactly right. If you guys don't mind, I'm going to plug in my laptop. Appreciate staff's thorough presentation on this. And to summarize, it raises two basic types of issues. One is the grow site location, both originally and where it is now. And the other is the issue of grading after May 10th. And I'm going to address each of those in turn, but I think beforehand, we would benefit from a little bit of history about this project and how it came to be. Now, as we know, Mr. Lewis, the property owner, owns two adjacent properties on Horseshoe Drive. There's 2749, the northerly parcel, which is about 17 acres. There's 2539, the southerly parcel, which is at issue today. That's grossly five acres, I think, smaller in any event. So, Mr. Lewis, the owner of these properties, lives in the Bay Area, he's a retiree, and he was approached by Mr. Mendoza in early 2016 to lease the properties for the express purpose of cultivating medical cannabis. So I have pictures of the actual leases here. We can see two very similar leases were signed, one for each property. Of course, both entail the payments of rent. Both were signed for the express purpose, and I apologize, the Zoom is insufficient to see this, but this provision, if you can make it out, section 2.1 of the leases, oops, that's the wrong button, expressly states that the leases are for the purpose of cultivating cannabis. So, there's no question that it was Mr. Lewis's intention to cultivate cannabis on both these properties. Indeed, he paid rent on both properties and signed leases that expressly stated his intent to cultivate on those parcels. So, there's no rational reason for him to lease two properties, establish two grow sites, without at least the understanding in his mind that he was going to register two grow sites. Indeed, two registration applications were submitted pursuant to the urgency ordinance, two sets of fees were paid. It was not until Ms. Moat's visit in, in early 2017, that the issue of the location of the southerly grow site came to the fore. While it sounds like Ms. Moat and Mr. Lewis's recollection of when that issue was first raised differs slightly, Ms. Moat indicating that it was after the inspection, Mr. Lewis recalls a discussion during the inspection, there's no doubt that around that time, the county took the position that the property line is where it's depicted here. This is the county's photograph, and just above it is the grow site, the southerly grow site here. And this is what the, what the county is basing its assertion that there was no cultivation on the southerly property on. So, when this was brought to Mr. Lewis's attention at, or shortly after Ms. Moat's inspection, his understanding of what needed to be done was that the, the cultivation site needed to be relocated such that it was not just on the southerly parcel, but set back 75 feet from the southerly parcel's property line. It was indicated to him by planning that he should do this. And indeed, that was confirmed in email correspondence from Ms. Moat, wherein she acknowledged that he intended to move the grow site and would do so once conditions on the ground permitted. Now, the idea that this is a basis for disqualifying the appellant stems from the county's, again, assertion that this site, and I think it was, it was spelled out explicitly in response to Commissioner Ladish's questions, was not astraddle the property line, but was wholly located on the northerly parcel, didn't touch the southerly site. Therefore, in the county's view, or the department's view, it doesn't qualify as a pre-May 10 cultivation site. There's no question that this site existed pre-May 10. The issue is the site's location. Now, the county likewise says in its current location, excuse me, the department says in its current location, that it is now astraddle the property line and thus infringes on the 75-foot setback, and even its new location is not compliant. Now, the basis for both these assertions are overlays of GIS parcel boundaries, as we see here, over images from Google Earth. As staff alluded to, those are imperfect sources of information about parcel boundaries. Here's an article that's, I believe, appended to our brief to the commission, says in short that there are two sources, when there are two sources of error, the parcel boundary data and the Google Earth imagery, which of course, Google Earth imagery endeavors to take a round object, the earth, transform it into something two-dimensional, and then overlay data over it. That can lead to compounding inaccuracies. This article uses an example of a data set with plus or minus 10 feet of accuracy combined with aerial imagery with plus or minus 30 feet can be, the errors can be greater than the sum of their parts, compounding errors. And to illustrate this point, we actually loaded the county data set into a different GIS program, QGIS, the county uses ArcGIS. When we use QGIS to load this parcel into the set, or, excuse me, the parcel set into the overlay system, you can see that actually the current location of the grow site, according to this overlay, is within the parcel boundary. And not only that, if this is, again, a little too small to see, but this is a measuring device on the program, shows a setback of about 80 feet. So again, this shows objectively that GIS data overlaid over aerial imagery is certainly far from an exact science. And again, we have our, excuse me, our overlay work in QGIS, we have a sworn declaration from Mr. Mendoza, excuse me, Mr. Lewis, who actually walked the property with a measuring wheel and staked it out, suggesting that the parcel boundary not only is north of where the department believes it to be, but also that the current grow site is within it, and that the former grow site, which is still visible here, straddled it. So, this fundamental premise that the site, the initial site was on the wrong parcel, the current site is too close to the property line, I think needs to be reconsidered in light of the potential inaccuracies in the GIS data and the aerial image overlays. So, moving on to, I zoomed it a little bit, you can see this measurement, I believe, says about 79 feet. And it's the dimension of this orange line right here. So, looking at the, the imagery that was submitted in support of the application, which the staff contends was a false or misleading statement, right? This photograph right here, which depicts the former grow site, the, the photograph was actually taken from this location. You can tell because there's a water, a circular water tank and a tree in the photo, which are present right here on the map. So there's no question that this photograph, which was submitted in connection with the application on the southerly site, was indeed of the southerly grow location. It was a good faith attempt to demonstrate to the department that there was cultivation going on prior to May 10th. There's no question about that. The only issue is where was the property boundary located? And staff would have you believe that this site was entirely on the northerly parcel. We submit that has not been established, and on the contrary, our data indicates it was astraddle the boundary. So, what we have is someone undeniably making a good faith effort to comply, trying to do the right thing. And if there was an error in the location of the grow site, it was unintentional, and it was minor. Now, moving on to the issue of grading, I have with me Mr. Callaway. Come on up here. Commissioners, this is Jonathan Callaway. He's the foreman of the site, hired by Mr. Mendoza to oversee operations there. And he was present overseeing the relocation of the garden, which Mr. Mendoza understood to be in compliance with the department's request. And he will explain to the commission that no grading activities were undertaken at all, even using the rather probing definition of grading that we used at the last hearing on the applicant's other property, which encompassed, as the commission may recall, things like minor vegetation removal, even, even items that would be well below the threshold to require a grading permit. Mr. Callaway will explain to the commission that even using that threshold, no grading occurred in connection with the relocation of the garden. So I'll let Mr. Callaway describe the process.
Yeah, John, John hired me on, early on, when Mr. Lewis had purchased that property. And basically, I was hired to oversee this kind of thing, but the property owner was the one that was telling me where all these lines were. So when we initially purchased the property, I think you'll, you'll see in the earlier photos when there's no garden up there, it pretty much looks exactly the same. All, all we did was, we took the pots and moved them from one spot to another spot. There was no grass cutting, no grading, no earth disturb, like absolutely nothing but foot traffic. And I think if you look at those aerial photos, it'll pretty much prove what I'm talking about. But we, we did, I believe the previous owner had tried to build a house there before we bought it. So that, that portion of the land was graded long, long ago, long before May 10th.
In other words, this area here, which staff is, is saying was, was post-May 10th grading to, quote-unquote, "the garden," what you're looking at is the result of pots being moved from this northerly area to this more southerly area by hand, and, and people walking around, obviously, those pots in, in that area to care for the plants and relocate them. But you're not looking at anything that is grading, even within the grading manuals, you know, more probing definition of what grading is. So, thank you, Mr. Callaway. So, to recap, we have an applicant who, in good faith, believes he has two parcels, is proceeding accordingly, is investing large sums, sums of money accordingly, paying rent on a parcel with the express purpose of cultivating cannabis. Indeed, the lease says that's the only thing you can do on there. And then he is told by, by code compliance that in fact, he was wrong about where the parcel was, or where the property line was. So he asks the landowner to mark out the parcel so that he can comply with the directive from code compliance to relocate the grow. The landowner does so to the absolute best of his ability, using a measuring wheel, a plat map, a stakes in the ground. The applicant then relocates the grow by picking up the pots, moving them to where he believes is within a safe distance of the property line, doesn't engage in any grading whatsoever, believes that this issue is resolved, and indeed, Ms. Moat confirms that this is what is happening. In her February 23rd letter, email rather, to Mr. Lewis, she says, "You have put up markers to establish the property lines and acknowledge that one grow site needs to be relocated to accommodate the property line and setback that will be done once the ground is dry enough to work on." Now, there's no mention in this email of needing to go back to the planning department. It's an indication that you need to pick up the, the grow site and move it to a more appropriate location. Now, that's what was done, that's what was done in good faith. And I think this is the, precisely the kind of situation where the commission ought to exercise its considerable discretion, not to penalize someone who was operating in good faith, made considerable capital investments, and at worst, got a property boundary slightly wrong. So again, going over these grounds for denial, we submit the original location of the grow site was not entirely on the northerly parcel, but astride the two. The current location, we believe, is actually within the setback on the southerly parcel. And even if they're not, these were good faith errors and they were minor errors. With respect to grading, there simply hasn't been grading past May 10th, even under the restrictive definition adopted by this commission in the prior hearing. So I think this is an excellent opportunity for the commission to use its discretion to preserve the county's tax base and not penalize someone who did their best to play by the rules. Thank you.
Can you hold on for just one moment so that we can ask questions, please?
I think the, the key thing to me is, I mean, you're relying on GIS to say that their GIS was wrong, and you're relying upon the property owner to go up with a measuring tape. Well, I mean, if you start in the wrong place, or you end up in the wrong place, measuring tape's not going to do you any good. Has there been a survey of this property line?
I don't believe there has been a survey of the property line done since it was purchased by Mr. Lewis. Whether there were more dated surveys, I don't know, but I'm not aware of a survey since.
Your, your Exhibit A, which is the subdivision map?
Yes, the plat map?
Yeah, the plat map. If I take, if I take that, figure out where the, the property line apparently starts right where the road is curving the most, and where the road is curving the most, and I, you know, just do my own guessing as to where that property line goes, it seems to me that the county's GIS is quite accurate, working from what you have given us. Just by the angle and the distances, and I wasn't out there with a measuring tape. But with your having the burden of proof as to where this property line is, just showing that GIS can be inaccurate isn't enough, and I think your Exhibit A tends to support the county. So, do you have?
Sure.
A way out from that?
A quick response. You're right, we've shown GIS data as well, right? What I understand to be the same parcel boundary data that was actually used by the county, just in a different program performing the overlay over the Google Earth aerial imagery. And we presented that not as some authoritative source for where the boundary actually is, but merely to illustrate that there are degrees of variation in the process of taking GIS data, overlaying it over satellite imagery, and then relying on that to make a determination. So, that was meant largely to underscore the fact that there are, there are margins of error that are significant enough that in cases like these, where we're talking about something that's relatively close to the property boundary, they can be, they can be very important. And my suggestion for what the commission should take away from all this is that, based on the information available to the applicants, they believed that they were locating the grow site correctly, both originally and currently. And if they weren't, right, even if the county's boundaries are the exact correct ones, right, let's assume there was no margin of error, these were small mistakes that were made in good faith. That's, that's the takeaway from.
The initial mistake, assuming the county's right, had this grow entirely on the other parcel. And that's, that's, we're not getting too fine a difference there, that's, that's a major mistake.
I would say it's a mistake of some 80 feet or so, if we look at the location of the property boundary. I mean, that's not a negligible amount, but when we're dealing with large parcels in vacant areas that don't have much by way of points of reference, I think it's not, it's an understandable mistake, even if it was made. And it's certainly not indicative of any bad faith. There's simply no, my clients would stand to gain nothing by intentionally locating two grows on one site and then paying rent on a vacant parcel of land next door, right?
That's certainly true. I'm just saying that the mistake, if the county's line is right, which it appears from your Exhibit A, is right, for me at least. Do you deny that Ms. Moat told people who were there at her, I guess it was her second visit, that they should contact the planning department about the move?
I, so, I don't have personal knowledge on that subject, and my understanding from Mr. Lewis is that he does not recall that.
Well, I don't, I don't think, she said that he was there.
Right, there's, so there's a little bit of daylight between how Mr. Lewis remembers finding out about this and how Ms. Moat just stated it occurred, right? Mr. Lewis recalled a conversation at the site. What Ms. Moat, I believe, alluded to, I don't want to put words in her mouth, was that after the site visit, she reviewed the aerials, and then there was a phone call. So, I guess there's a, there's a small discrepancy in the mode of communication, and I guess also a discrepancy in the precise details, right? There was clearly a takeaway from this exchange that the site needed to be relocated. Whether that required further county, further intervention by the planning department or not, I guess Mr. Lewis and Ms. Moat don't agree in their recollection of what was said. I would point out to the commission that the email we had up on the screen earlier from Ms. Moat to Mr. Lewis confirming that this plan was being put into operation did not mention the need for any further clearance from the department.
Okay, so, let's just say we have a 22,000 square foot application. We have a 6,000 square foot grow on the wrong parcel. It's on the wrong parcel, we have to move it. I don't care who says move it, somebody said move it. I believe Mrs. Moat has been pretty articulate in her emails, her communications, and if she has come before us and said, "I don't recall that," she's been pretty clear. When she's recalled it, she's been pretty clear for me. But, we have an application for 22, we have a clear grow on the wrong site at 6,000, we're told to move it, by who, I don't care, and when, but it's way after the timeline, let's be clear about that. And we move it, and now it's 10,000 square feet. You don't see any issue with that?
The, so, we're talking about the relative size of, to be clear, of this, this site here, which is partially pictured, and this site here? I guess this, this site, to me, visually appears to be of a different shape and actually smaller. So, I'm, I guess, I guess I'm not certain about, I guess, we can't really see the whole size of the other site, but I'm not, I'm not.
Is that, that's your photo?
That's, that's.
So, if we look at the photos that Madeline had on the screen, we can clearly see it, it's not a question.
Let me see if I can get that. So, here's, unfortunately, they're not on the same slide, but so, here's this grow area here, and its original location, it's kind of a half-circle shape, I would say.
Sure.
And then here it is, and I think the scale's about the same. So, here it is in its present location. I guess it's been, it's been, the shape has been changed. Let's say, assuming, assuming indeed that did result in an increase in canopy square footage, I mean, I guess I would say that the, the application was for significantly more than this.
Doesn't matter what the application was, according to the urgency ordinance, it matters what was planted, what was growing on the deadline of May 10th, and proof that it was growing. So, the application could say three acres, but you still only get what you had on May 10th. You don't get any more than that, according to the urgency ordinance. Right?
I don't disagree with that, that's what the urgency ordinance says. I guess I'm not certain that, it's been established that there was an increase in square footage, or that that was really one of the dispositive issues here.
Okay, well, that is one of the issues in the resolution that we're looking at today in the recommendation. So, I'm sure that we're going to follow up with Madeline and say, where did we come up with these numbers, so that we can have some clarity on that? Because that's a big point for me. It's a really large point for me. And then, I'm looking at, I kind of prefer the county maps, because your maps, I don't know what's wrong with them, they're, they're not giving me the projection that the county maps are giving. So, I'm going to, I'm going to have Madeline switch over to her maps and explain to us the difference between the six and 10. Do you guys want to do that now, or are you okay? Do you have questions for him before I have computers switch out?
My questions for him can wait.
Where would you like me to start?
Okay, let's start with the area that we think was the 6,000 square feet up above, and then we have this little tiny pad just over the property line. And how are we coming up with the 6,000 square feet?
This area here is 6,000 square feet.
Okay.
I don't know what the exact square footage of this grow area is.
Okay.
Partially because of the way that it's put together.
Okay, and you got the 6,000 square feet measuring it off of your program?
Using the GIS, yes.
Okay. And now that it's planted, you're measuring it again, and it's 10,000 square feet?
Correct.
Okay, so you can clearly see that they have expanded the grow site that was submitted, or was visible at May 10th, where they're growing?
Correct.
May I interject a question?
Yeah.
So, I believe that what was just said is that this little, this little cleared area is 6,000 square feet, right?
Yes.
But the grow site is here, this is just a patch of dirt. Why are we measuring the square footage of a patch of dirt here, when we're talking about this grow site versus?
Because it tells us that extra grading was done. When it goes from 6,000, then we go to 10,000, there was grading done.
Not necessarily. If, if all they did was move the pots and disturb the land in the moving of the pots.
If you look at the photos, and you look at the measurements that she's referencing, it is very clear that we are outside of that little plot of land, and it looks different.
We're way outside that, but if we, if we compare the size of the, of the grow, where it actually happened, and, and compare the 6,000 square feet, I couldn't, I, my eye would make it so that, that initial, if we're, if we're comparing the grow that happened to the, the size of the clearing, I'd say the grow that actually happened was probably around 10,000 feet.
If I might approach a little closer to the screen, I can, I can make my point without a little more, I think. There's, there's three features that we're talking about here. There's the, the former grow site right here, there's a patch of dirt, essentially, land that's clear vegetation here, and then there's the subsequent grow site, which is not pictured, but is like kind of over this area. This patch of dirt here, I, I'm not sure, I don't really understand the relevance of it. What we're talking about here is, did this grow site right here get bigger when it was brought over here?
Well, it wasn't.
And, but we're using the size of this patch of dirt as part of that analysis, and I don't really understand why.
Well, I guess for me, I can explain why I'm looking at it that way.
Okay.
It's because there's never been a grow on the other parcel. So, if I'm even going to consider that there was potentially one, it's going to be in that little spot. Or it never existed on this parcel, and it doesn't qualify at all. That's kind of how I'm looking at it. So, that little patch would be the only thing that saves your client, in my opinion, because I don't see where anything else could have been grown on that parcel that was registered. It's not like we have a issue with a 75-foot setback, we don't, looking at that, to me. We clearly have two grows on one parcel and none on the other, unless that little patch plays a role.
Well, I wouldn't want to make any false representations to the commission, I don't think that, I, I don't believe there was cultivation, that patch, I believe it's just a patch of dirt. I wouldn't want the commission to rely on that. I think the issue that.
And I understand you're presenting two applications and rentals and showing proof that that was the intent. I get that. So, I think what I'm going to do is let the other commissioners have their questions.
If you'd like, now I can clarify the issue regarding the patch of dirt and the point of bringing it up.
That would be great, because that's a contention for him and I.
There's another thing that I just wanted to say when we were looking at this file. If you look at the photograph that was submitted here, so this is the original site that's to the north of the property boundary, right? So, that they're saying that this was misplaced. You can clearly see the topography of this site. To me, this looks like there was some grading done, just small amount anyway, to flatten a few terraces. So, we assume when you move a site like this to another spot on a parcel that has very similar topography, that some kind of grading would have occurred. Whether or not there were more pots added when they moved them?
Do we have a current photo of the grow?
We do not.
We do not, no. We only have his overheads.
Correct, yes.
So, we don't know what the lay of the land looks like on where they're currently located.
Correct, yes.
Mr. Callaway could testify to that, if it would be helpful, I think, yeah. Can you explain the topography of the current grow site? If the commission wants to hear it, it's up to you.
No, it's fine. Is that level, or is that a hill as well?
No, it's completely level. I believe the previous owner, the gentleman was going to build a house there, and then he quit, and then that's when Mr. Lewis bought the property. So, that was already completely flattened out. So, the only thing that you might consider grading would be the building of the fence when we moved it from one to the other, that's, or foot traffic.
And did you use, how did you move the pots?
We, we got them in a bucket, and poured it in the bucket, and then drove it up there, and then dropped it.
A front loader, basically?
Yeah, Bobcat.
Yeah, a Bobcat, okay.
And then dropped it into the pot.
But you didn't use any blade on that Bobcat to level the ground, or?
It was already all done. It was already done by the previous guy.
Madeline's contention, basically, is that, here's the area that's 6,000 square feet. That is the same area as the grow site right there. You can see where that tree is, that tree is, in relation to the grow site. Now, this grow site is 10,000 square feet, this grow site is, this graded area is 6,000 square feet. So, the presumption is, is that an additional 4,000 square feet of grading occurred in order to accommodate the larger grow site. And perhaps, Caroline's also been on the property. Would you come over and take a look? Sorry, I made you take that down.
That's all right.
When you visited the grow site on your second inspection, when you, when you examined the area, did it appear as though grading occurred in order to accommodate the larger grow area?
There was just, it looked like it was just that small cleared area. It was a fairly flat surface, and there was an area of bare dirt.
So, just to tie a bow on this, I guess we're not talking about an allegation that the grow area, the number of square foot of the, the original location was increased during the move. The, the issue is whether that patch of dirt was expanded, right? So, it's not a canopy issue, it's a grading issue. Okay, all right, just to be clear. And, and again, Mr. Callaway has explained that there was no grading done in that area, the, what the overheads, the aerials show is the result of foot traffic during the movement and curation of the plants.
Okay, please.
Okay, if you could look at the August 20, 2016 photo, it shows the two original grows, correct?
Yes.
And then it has the property line as the county views it, sets that both grows are to the north, right?
Correct.
And according to your letter, you, you calculated the property line, you believe to be about 80 feet north of what the county calculated?
Correct.
And, and how did you arrive at that?
That's actually, sorry, that's actually a statement from Mr. Lewis, who I believe arrived at it using a wheel, because this, this length right here, this westerly boundary of the southern parcel is called out in the plat map, and I believe, you have to do a little subtraction to determine what it is. But, so, he, he ascertained the length, I believe, of that boundary, walked it with a measuring wheel to determine how far up the, the boundary was located, and then he went west, excuse me, east from there to determine it. So, that's what Mr. Lewis concluded, and that's how, indeed, he marked the property at the time the relocation occurred, or before the relocation occurred, that's how he staked it out. And when we did the GIS overlay that you saw earlier during my presentation, it was actually fairly consistent with Mr. Lewis's location of the property line.
Okay, now, if we go 80 feet north from what the county says is the property line, understanding that the boundary between the two is almost 400 feet, according to the assessor's map, 397 feet, where do we wind up with respect to the grow site that was moved? In your judgment?
Yeah, so, we, we wind up with a boundary grossly here, so it would transect the, the kind of lower part of the old grow site. If that is indeed the way the satellite and the GIS, or then the property boundary are correctly overlaid, the new grow site would be about 79 feet south. Its, its most northerly point would be about 79 feet south of the property boundary.
Okay, now, how much, how much of the old grow site, according to your best calculations, lay south of what you believe is a? lay south of what you believe is the property line?
A minority of it. I would say, I mean, just from, from, to ballpark it, I would say something around 20% of it. The majority, even, even in, assuming the property line were to the north, where Mr. Louis believes it to be located, I, I would say about 20% of the old grow site would be on the southerly parcel, about 80% on the northerly parcel.
Actually, looking at it, if I'm looking at 400 feet on that line going east to west, which I am, and going up one-fifth of that, you're not going to get very much of that old grow site.
I, I concur. I, it would be, it would be a straddle of the line, but mostly on the northerly parcel.
Okay. Now if that's the case, if that's the case, then wouldn't it be true that under the urgency ordinance, the only part of the old grow site that you could relocate would be that part that lies to the south within the 75-foot setback of the property line?
I, I think that gets into a, a question of statutory interpretation of the proportional adjustment provisions of the ordinance, which I don't have in front of me. So I don't know. Sure. May, may I borrow it? So the, the section of the UO that Mr. Turner just handed me is, I think, N7 of, well. Anyways, I, I believe this is the, the.
7995165.
"A registrant seeking to conduct grading for this purpose beyond May 10th must provide the planning department with a copy of his current grading permit for this quote proportional adjustment at the time of submitting his or her application for registration. No grading or earthmoving for the purpose of establishing or expanding any commercial cannabis cultivation site shall be permitted after May 10th, 2016." So reading this provision, it appears to govern situations wherein the applicant needs to conduct grading to comply with a setback requirement. And if that is the case, the applicant is required to make that request, I guess, in conjunction with the middle of the application. I'm not sure that pertains to this situation where no grading was done in connection with relocating the, the grow site. I'm not sure if there is a provision in the urgency ordinance that governs what to do if a grow site needs to be relocated to accommodate setbacks, but all the relocation entails is picking up and moving it. I'm not sure that particular scenario is addressed in the UO.
And if I could.
Assuming, assuming that you're correct about that, that N7 doesn't apply because no grading was necessary, still you are left with the problem that most of your cultivation of that one site was on the wrong side of the property line.
Yeah, and I don't.
And so where, where is, where is the authority to move it to a separate parcel in the urgency ordinance?
Sure. I think, I think the authority is not expressed anywhere, but nor is the prohibition, right? I think situations like these come within the sound discretion of an administrative agency. And of course, you know, there are legal doctrines that govern this sort of thing, right? The doctrine of substantial compliance and things of that nature, right? Where to the extent we have applicants for almost any entitlement, right? Who have made technical or, 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 you know, minor errors that don't evidence any ill intent in connection with their application, I think are quite routinely given the opportunity to fix that, that technical deficiency. So, you know, I, I don't think we will find anywhere, expressed in the urgency ordinance, a provision governing what to do if an applicant was in error about the location of a property line and that property line transected the garden. I think these are the kinds of, of circumstances that administrative agencies like this one have the discretion to handle as they see fit. And I think the equities in this case would weigh in favor of, of not penalizing someone who, who was operating in good faith and made at most a minor error.
Would you agree if you look at the, to compare the old grow that got moved, shown on the August 20, 2016 photo, with what got planted by June 1 of this year, that there appears to be a lot more plants in the new site?
I, I, candidly, I couldn't say and that's, that's not trying to be evasive. I just, I, I, I don't know.
Okay. Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify that you're doing a whole lot of talking about Mr. Lewis. And he is the property owner, he is not the applicant, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then I have a question. The gentleman said that part of the grading might have been done or looks like it had been done from the moving of the fence, correct?
I, I believe he said that the only activity that might be classified as grading was the establishment of a fence around that perimeter.
Oh, I thought you said moving of the fence. I just wanted to clarify that because I don't see a fence around the previous grow.
Yeah, I don't, I, I, I don't know.
Well, there's a picture of the previous grow where it's up. Can you go back, Madeline, where it's up on the, before they moved it?
Is that the, the picture that was submitted with the application?
That one. No, fair.
But that, that was before the, before the urgency ordinance.
Right. I, I also don't think there's, I, I don't, I don't know because I can't see very well, but I also don't think there's any plants. I don't think there's any plants in the, the photo either. I think those are just earth and pots, or pots of earth.
Okay. Um, if there's no further questions, I'd like to take a short break before. Thank you. I'd like to take a short break before we go to public comment, if that's okay. I want to just do a little bit of research on some of the things that were discussed here. Just if we can have a 10-minute break, that'd be great.
Certainly. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So unless the commissioners had any final questions, I'm going to go ahead and let the public have a few words. You all good? Okay. Is there anybody from the public that would like to make comment on this particular appeal? All right. We're back to the rebuttal here. Got anything you'd like to say?
Only I just wanted to point out that Mr. Lambie was showing us the overlay of his QGIS imagery. QGIS is an open source software that's open to public modification and would have a much larger margin of, margin of error than our county ArcGIS would. So just keep that in mind.
Peter, did you have anything you'd like to add?
Yes, I passed out and should be a copy there on the podium there for you, Mr. Lambie, a copy of the recorded parcel map. This was a surveyed map, recorded in 1992 that created the parcel, established the parcel line. And I think that this clearly reflects the approximate boundary shown on our GIS. You know, the, the parcel line, the, from the point where it diverts from the road right away is approximately 145 feet. It does not extend above the curve of the road. And if you compare that with the approximate property line on the county's aerial imaging and the county's GIS system, you can see it's fairly close. I can't say it's exactly because it's, you know, it's not a survey. I'm not a surveyor. I did take a surveying class in school. I spent 30-plus years reviewing maps. I think I can pretty accurately say that the northern property line of the subject parcel is fairly close to where it's depicted on our aerial imaging and in the county's ArcGIS. So I think it's pretty clear, given the fact that the accuracy of the ArcGIS system is typically more accurate than the open source GIS data that Mr. Lambie used, that the cultivation area originally was not at all on this property. And so there was never any cultivation on the property and therefore it did not meet the criteria that a site had been prepared or cultivation occurred on the parcel to be registered prior to May 10th. The applicant indicated that the, the grading that had occurred, the 6,000 square feet that we assumed was the cultivation area that was intended for this was actually prepared for a house site by a prior owner. And so there was no cultivation activity on the site prior to May 10th. And I think that's pretty clear by the, the surveyed map and our ArcGIS boundary, or parcel boundaries.
Just a couple of comments in response, if I may.
Well, no. First, we're going to ask him some questions.
Oh, please proceed.
The, assuming that you have established that the property line is as shown in that picture, assuming that there was a good faith error on the part of the, of the applicant, which led to his planting the grow in their own parcel, and assuming that the canopy size, uh, current canopy size, and this, some may disagree with this assumption, current canopy size is the same as the canopy size on the erroneously placed grow. Then what is the department's position as to the various allegations? You know, grounds, like the faults in the leading ground and this sort of thing. Where, where are we as to the department's position?
Let me just go through each one. I think that the first finding, it doesn't relate to the grading issue. That's a separate issue.
I'm sorry. I didn't throw in. My other assumption was that there was no grading as the, the testimony provided, that there was no grading to make the, the, the new grow site amenable to cultivation. So there was no actual additional grading. They just moved the pots. That was, that was my last assumption.
I, I would say that we do not have a clear, what's we're looking for, documentation of that grading occurred. And so probably less, even though clearly an expansion of the area on the site had occurred because of the unfortunate wording of the ordinance, that the intent of the ordinance that it was to freeze what was in place on May 10th was actually not in the ordinance. And so we sort of relied on the grading issue. In this case, I guess we don't really have the documentation that grading did actually occur. So I would probably not rely on that finding for this. Finding number two, it would appear to me that it is within 75 feet of the property line. I think that the, the information we have more accurately depicts where that property line is than the image that the appellant showed. And I think it's the burden of proof is on the property owner to determine where the property line is, that, you know, they have to demonstrate that they are with, you know, outside of that setback area. And to not have it surveyed, that's the, because many other applicants, we've said, go and survey your property. The ran it wheels, said, well, this we think it is, you know, it should be appropriate to hire a surveyor to determine where that is. Clearly on number three, he has not provided evidence that 22,000 square feet or even 10,000 square feet of cultivation or preparation for cultivation took place on the property as of May 10th. And I think that's the real critical one, that the, the evidence was for a different parcel mistake or otherwise. It's their responsibility to know where they're going. You don't build your house on someone else's parcel. It's like, oops, I, I, I erred. You know, that was the applicant's responsibility to provide that information to show that they were cultivating on the parcel that they registered. And it wasn't until, you know, January of last year that they just, you know, that we pointed out to them that they were apparently not on the parcel. And so I think that's, on number three is, is clear that the cannabis cultivation did not occur on the parcel that was registered. And so that's where I would rely primarily on. And then the false and misleading, it was clearly false. It was not cannabis cultivation that was on the parcel. Whether it was intentionally misleading, I don't know. I cannot put my mind into the, you know, framework of what the applicant was trying to submit. But given the assumption that they thought it was on the property, I probably can't say that it was misleading, but it certainly was false.
Clarify things for me.
Okay.
Mr. Maurer, looking at this parcel map, if I'm reading this correctly, there's a little bitty white circle on each end of that east-west line between these two parcels, which says, it indicates a 5/8 rebar tagged LS4222 set this survey. So if this is correct and it's a recorded parcel map, why wouldn't it be true that that line should be easy to locate if you go look for the rebar? Correct?
That's typically what is done. Unfortunately, in many cases, those markers get moved. They get either plowed over by, you know, just activity, difficult to find. But if it's there, it should be easy to find by identifying, you know, typical survey activity of, of locating a point, measuring the, the direction and the, and the distance and poking around for it.
Question for Mr. Lambie. Was any effort made to locate those rebars?
I'm going to forward that question to Mr. Callaway because I don't know. My, my guess is, you know, the, the rebars were in position as of 1992. I'm not certain they remain in position today, but Mr. Callaway can perhaps shed some light on that if you know.
Yeah. Initially, we, we did look for those things. We found a couple of stakes here and there. We assumed that we had plenty of room when we put up that initial plot. We were told otherwise, so that's when he took out the measure. And so we don't know if that was accurate or not. So that's when we took out the measure and we thought we were within it, in compliance after that.
Thank you. Yeah. I, 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 I don't know whether those.
So after code compliance, went out there and said that it's over the property line, they didn't have a surveyor do it? They were still trying to do it themselves? I, I thought there was a surveyor. I don't know why I thought that.
No. Mr. Lewis is the one who placed the stakes.
And I did hear, I did hear him say, Mr. Lewis earlier.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. All right. Well, then I think you might want to say one last thing?
Uh, just a couple of thoughts in response. As a housekeeping matter, if we're going to be relying on this parcel map, I would ask that it be added to the administrative record. I'm sure you're on top of that already, Peter. The idea that QGIS is an inaccurate program because it's open source as compared with ArcGIS, I'm not ready to subscribe to at all. I mean, if that's the case, I think Wikipedia would like a word with you, right? The largest and most, certainly most comprehensive encyclopedia in the world is compiled in an open source fashion. So the idea that an open source piece of software, simply by virtue of being open source, is unreliable, I, I would dispute and I don't think there's any basis for concluding that. I would also point out that we're looking at a two-part exercise. What you see up here i- is the result of two steps. Identifying the shape that meets and bounds of the property and then overlaying that over a satellite imagery, which again is a round object that has been flattened out. What staff and, and Mr. Maurer have expended a bit of time on here is trying to convince the commission that their, their, their shapes are accurate, right? The, the parcel boundaries that they have placed there are accurate and they're using the roadway as a reference for that as to where the, you know, the, the northerly parcel cuts off, et cetera. But there is two parts to this analysis, right? There's the shape of the boundaries, the polygons themselves. And then there's also the overlaying process. And there can be, as the, the article I've submitted demonstrated, sources of error in both steps. So while this addresses the shape of the, the polygons, it does not necessarily address the entire way that this sausage up here is made. So I want to point that out. And last. And lastly, with respect to... Well, I guess I would leave it at that. I would, as a closing thought, I would just say that even assuming everything staff suggested to this commission is correct, and I think we've seen, there's some doubt in a number of areas, but even assuming things were exactly as they said, this is the epitome of a harmless error. The applicant was paying rent for two parcels, paid application fees for two parcels, paid taxes for two parcels. And to eliminate an economically useful use of land under these circumstances, I think is not in the public interest and is not what we ought to be doing as a matter of public policy. So I would leave you with that thought. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll leave you with my thought regarding parcel maps. I'm a real estate broker in the county. Every single piece of property I sell, we get one of these parcel maps. We can almost go out there and find those pins ourselves, but we don't. We hire a surveyor, and the roads and the contours and the pins that are shown on these maps are exactly what the surveyors find. So I am going to tell you that from my experience over 26 years of selling real estate in this county and doing survey maps with professional surveyors, I have never seen a lot be across the road. It, the property corner pins that are set from these maps when they were done is pretty darn accurate to the road. So I would debunk that on my own personal experience for myself. Can't speak for others. The other thing is that when I look at the grow and I see that it was moved, that's good. They complied, they moved. But I don't think they moved it enough. I still think it was on the wrong property. I still think it's across the property line. And as critical as it is in getting this situation and the urgency ordinance right, I probably would have made really sure that I surveyed that land and put that where it was supposed to be. So I struggle a little bit with that. Mr. Lattish, do you have some? I guess I should close this up and bring it back to the commission. I apologize.
Thank you, Commissioner.
For deliberations.
Well, I, the assumptions I gave to the planning director are my conclusions. I don't think, I think they've satisfied the burden of proof that the, that there was no additional grading. Just from my own eyes, it looked to me like the canopy, the canopy area on the grow that was entirely on the wrong piece of property was roughly the same as the canopy area that we ended up with. And I, I see no reason why there wouldn't have been good faith in what they were trying to do. I think they were egregiously wrong as far as that first grow goes. And I, I think as far as the property line goes, I think it does, I think that's a pretty accurate representation of where the property line is. It cuts through the relocated grow. Given all that, I agree with the planning director that, that, I don't want to put words into your mouth. I think, I think you said if, if you agreed with those assumptions I gave you, that the first, first finding might be eliminated as far as the grading goes, but that the second and third findings would remain, and I would agree with that, especially on the third, that the, it was to, for the registrant to show that they'd taken steps on the parcel. And here, it was off the parcel. And we do need to have evidence under, some sort of evidence statement, I think, under number three. And on number four, on the evidence, I would just, I would cross out the last two words, "and misleading." That it, that it was false, it was inaccurate, but I would just not want to make a finding right now that this constitutes misleading. So I, I think, my feeling is, is that the appeal should be denied for those reasons, but the resolution should be edited in the way I suggest.
Well, I almost agree with Mr. Lattish. Speaking to you, ma'am? I'm sorry. I said I almost agree with Mr. Lattish. I agree that the first should be removed. I believe that when they moved their grow, they also added to it. That's my opinion. There was no proof that on May 10th, they were growing on this parcel. Not on this piece of parcel, so... And the evidence in number four, I agree, remove "and misleading."
Okay. Under the urgency ordinance 17.95.165K, there shall be no more than one medical cannabis registration per parcel. So you only get one site on a parcel. And this one, according to the county's property line, which I think is the most accurate, based on everything that's come before us, there were two. And to qualify under the urgency ordinance under 17.95.165 N3B, you have to show evidence of cultivation on the parcel to be registered, and we simply do not have that, never did. And so I believe the appeal should be denied for that simple reason. There has not been presented evidence of cultivation prior to May 10th, 2016, on the parcel to be registered. There is no provision in the urgency ordinance to move a site from one parcel to another. That was not the idea. I agree that there should not be a finding that there was impermissible grading. I don't think the evidence would support that finding. I think that the photo that was submitted with the application was false in the sense it was wrong. It purported to show a grow on this parcel, and it wasn't. Whether that was intentionally so or not, I don't think matters. So I'm prepared to sign onto a resolution that's based on the lack of showing of cultivation on this parcel, and that the photo submitted was false.
Okay. So I just want to take this one by one and poll a little bit here because I think that looking at the resolution, item number one, I believe that what I heard from everybody is that they would delete that and the evidence for item number one.
Agreed.
Correct.
Okay. Item number two, the cultivation area of the, of an outdoor or mixed light commercial cannabis cultivation site, shall be setback at least 75 feet from any property line. And with the evidence stated here, I believe we're saying to leave that one in because they were not... And do we want to add additional language to that, that it wasn't even that it was a 75-foot setback, that it was in error on the wrong parcel and that?
I don't think it's a setback issue.
Right.
I think the evidence is it wasn't within 75 feet of any property line.
Okay. So you want to delete number two?
I would.
You want to delete number two?
I have no problem with that.
Okay. So item one and two are struck from the resolution. Item number three, the registrant must provide evidence satisfactory to the planning director that no later than May 10th, 2016, here she took demonstrable steps toward the development of a commercial medical cannabis. There is no evidence under three...
There's no finding either.
Right. So do you want to leave three? You want to edit three?
Three needs to have a finding and evidence.
Okay.
So I have some proposed language.
Okay.
I would add at the end of that, the quote of the code, "No such evidence was provided," period. And then the evidence is, "Aerial imaging shows that cultivation was occurring on the adjacent parcel. No cultivation or demonstrable steps taken towards the development of commercial cannabis cultivation occurred on the subject parcel."
Read that last sentence one more time.
"No cultivation or demonstrable steps taken towards the development of commercial cannabis cultivation occurred on the subject parcel prior to May 10th, 2016."
And on your first sentence there, I'd add in a, you know, the area, you refer to aerial photography or aerial whatever, and corroborated by parcel map. Because I think, I think those two go together quite forcefully.
I agree. You all okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. But then let's go back to where we were on the "no such evidence was provided" and aerial imaging. I guess, that last sentence, something's not working for me, and I don't know what it is. If you could just read it one more time.
"No cultivation or demonstrable steps taken towards the development of commercial cannabis cultivation occurred on the subject parcel prior to May 10th, 2016."
I'm good. Are you guys okay with that?
Well, I don't understand why you need the demonstrable steps language. B doesn't say that. It says you have to have date stamped photography evidence of cultivation.
I guess I was addressing both A and B. It talks about where it needs to be on the parcel. Let me look at the full text of the...
Well, you can simply say there was no photographic evidence of grading or earth moving or cultivation on the subject parcel prior to May 10th. That's true.
And that would be a true statement, and that would cover all three, Peter?
Okay, run that, edit by me.
There was no photographic evidence of grading or earth moving or cultivation on the parcel, no later than May 10th.
Well, we get into the problem of there, there wasn't, there was sign of grading, but not for these purposes.
No, they said that land didn't need to be graded because it was level, so I'm not buying that now.
Not on this parcel.
Not on this parcel.
Years ago, apparently it was graded for a house, but there was no necessity...
So there was no grading done to substantiate growing commercial?
Yes.
So there's no grading? There was nothing done for this?
For this? That's my...
Yeah, okay.
So it would read, the evidence statement would read, "Aerial imaging corroborated by the recorded parcel map 8-106 shows that the cultivation was occurring on the adjacent parcel. There was no photographic evidence of grading, earth moving, or cultivation on May 10th, 2016, on or prior to?"
That works for me. Are you guys okay with that?
Yes.
One, two, three. I'm just polling. You already outvoted.
Oh, I know. I'm just trying to... There was evidence of grading, but not for cultivation purposes. I like the way...
Oh, you want to add that word?
I like the way you had it to start with, because grading is a part of...
So do you want to add, "There was evidence of grading, but not for cultivation purposes"? Those are good words.
Fine. If you can do that, or get that meaning in there, Peter, I don't...
Well, you could say there was no evidence, photographic evidence of grading or earth moving for development...
Yes.
...of a cannabis cultivation site, and there was no evidence of cultivation on this parcel.
Okay.
Let's let Peter write it down.
Okay.
Okay. And number four, I believe we all thought was good.
Striking and misleading.
And misleading.
And misleading. We're striking that.
Well, four needs a finding.
Well, you're right.
The photograph was not on the subject parcel. The photograph was not of cultivation on the subject parcel.
That's great.
Okay. So...
Hold on, wait a minute here. This...
Do any of the commissioners have...
Four, four cites that part of 17.95.170.
Right.
Print three, registration was in error or was accomplished under false pretenses. That's not correct. What is correct is that the application for registration contained false information, which is under four of 17.95.178.
That's true. You're right.
It is.
And so we need to substitute the language in subparagraph four for what's there now under subparagraph three. And then we need to have a finding that says something like, "The photograph submitted with the registration..."
That evidence statement under number four actually goes to number three as well. And so I think we just add, we strike the reference to 170A and add the evidence statement to the evidence of finding number three, which now the basis of the denial.
So there would not be a four?
Correct.
So there would be one basis for denial.
That would work for me.
Is that...
I'm okay with that.
Take the false out of... Okay.
No.
Okay. Yeah, I see.
No, because three puts it.
That's fine with me.
Okay. All right. Are we ready for the recommendation to be read? As amended severely. Yep. They're not answering me, so I'm saying yes.
Okay.
Okay, then. Planning staff recommends the planning commission adopt resolution denying 2016-462, thereby upholding the planning director's denial of commercial cannabis registration 2016-462. Thank you.
This action...
I second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Forward to one with one ampersand, and you want to read the...
So this action is final unless appealed to the board supervisors within 15 calendar days. And if you could please send the PowerPoint presentation to Madeline for the record. That'd be appreciated. Thank you.
I shall. Thank you, Mr. Maurer. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next appeal of 2016-799. Madeline, are you doing that one as well?
Yes. Sorry, give me just a second here.
Yeah, we're taking a second, too. Switch it up.
I do not have a PowerPoint presentation.
I do not have a PowerPoint presentation. Let me know when you're ready.
We're ready.
Okay. Madeline Flandreau, Planner Two, presenting appeal two zero one six dash seven nine nine for Greg Garner. Mr. Garner submitted an application for twenty-two thousand square feet of outdoor cultivation on July seventh, 2016. On March twenty-second, 2017, a complaint based inspection was conducted at the site. The APN is zero one two dash zero one two dash zero three three and is located off of Independent Cemetery Lane in railroad flat. Code compliance on March twenty-second, 2017, during their inspection, observed multiple violations, including inadequate fencing surrounding the cultivation site. Did not have a properly posted notice of application pending certificate. There was an unhoused generator, unpermitted hoop houses with electrical, and I note the registration was for outdoor cultivation, not for mixed light. There were three unregistered trailers, camping in tents, and debris littering the property. On March twenty-second, 2017, a ten day correction notice was signed by Mr. Garner at the time of the inspection. However, the only correction Mr. Garner made within the ten days given was to come to the planning department to submit in writing a change to his registration from outdoor to mixed light cultivation. On April eleventh, 2017, code compliance received two photographs of corrections via email. Code compliance responded to the email stating that the photographs were inadequate, and subsequently additional photographs were emailed again to code compliance on April twenty-fourth, 2017, and May third, 2017. However, according to code compliance, Mr. Garner failed to correct three remaining violations, including the unhoused generator, the unpermitted hoop houses, and unpermitted grading. Mr. Garner was required to receive a physical address for the parcel from the county in order to apply for the hoop house permits from the building department. As of May twenty-sixth, 2017, neither an address nor permits were applied for, and on that date, code compliance emailed Mr. Garner asking for a status update, and they did not receive a response. The registration was denied on August eleventh, 2017, and on August twenty-first, 2017, an appeal of the denial was submitted to the planning department by Mr. Garner. In his letter, Mr. Garner stated that he had made all the required corrections and was told by code compliance that they were adequate, and that he was in the process of trying to obtain an address for his parcel so he could apply for the hoop house permits with the building department. However, he was delayed as he needed to get proof of legal access to his parcel, and I believe he was trying to work with Public Works on that issue. So as of today's date, he was not able to apply for building departments due to those issues. Sabrina Cable was the code compliance officer who did the inspections and was in communication with Mr. Garner. And if you have any more questions about that, you could talk to her, she's here today. And that's all I have for my presentation.
Sabrina is here, and she actually has some comments to make and some handouts for the board and for the appellate, for the commission of the appellate.
Madeline, when was he first told he needed to get an address?
Sabrina might have to answer that question.
I'm unsure on the exact date when he was told he needed an address. I'm assuming it's when he came in to apply for the permits. Maybe the same day he changed his cultivation type to mixed light, I'm not sure though. And what you have in front of you is, after reading Mr. Garner's appeal letter, I wanted to address a couple items that he brought up. The first page you'll see is correspondence between me and Mr. Garner. Highlighted, you'll see where, I thanked him for the pictures, he did make some corrections, and that looked good. And I in no way told him those were adequate. I did say he needed to continue to work towards getting the hoop houses permitted. And he replied stating some holdups he was having with getting a survey done or something. That was the last correspondence I received from Mr. Garner on May third. I, like Madeline said, I did reach out to him on May twenty-sixth, no response. In the packet, there's more correspondence that's not necessarily relevant to today. You will also see a, the activities, projects, and development is printed out from Permits Plus or Permitting Software. There are three items in our system. One deposit for, that you see under Greg Garner was for a new dwelling. There are, that was printed out this morning, there are still no permits in our system for the hoop houses. And lastly, you'll see, this is Google Earth imagery from June twenty-eighth, twenty, yes, June twenty-eighth, 2017, showing that the hoop houses were still up. I believe in his letter, he claimed that he tore them down. And that's what I have for you, I'm happy to answer any questions.
When you reached.
Sorry.
Tough with a PA system.
We're called two.
When you last reached out to him in May, was that by a phone call?
Email.
Email.
Yeah, I didn't bring a printout from that because he didn't reply, it was.
And in that, did you say, these are still three things you have in compliance?
I simply said, what is the status of your property?
What's going on?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was getting a little bit frustrated at that point. I had talked to Mr. Polzoni, the address coordinator, who had said he had gotten an inquiry a while back about getting an address, but that was it, nothing had ever come of it. And it just didn't appear that Mr. Garner was taking the steps to remedy the, the permit situation.
Now, at some point, there was a, a list of needed corrections that Mr. Garner signed, correct?
Yes, that was the initial complaint inspection. There is a two-page correction letter, which he signed, and I believe on that, I even wrote that the onus was on him to contact me when the corrections were made, which he failed to do.
The, this letter.
Oh, that's, that's a report I wrote.
That's a report that you did for the file?
I wrote for, yeah.
Yeah.
Just so I wouldn't forget.
And it talks about a duplicate of the corrections list signed by Garner, which we don't have.
You don't, was that? I thought I had seen it on the website.
At least, I don't have.
I don't know that I have that.
So.
I can get.
What, what are, what are the corrections that have not been made?
The basis for my recommendation for denial was the unpermitted hoop houses. As I told Mr. Garner during the inspection, it was a complaint based inspection to address some issues from a neighbor. And he would still, it was raining, it was pouring that day, so we couldn't do a complete inspection even if we'd wanted to. And it was just too slippery and treacherous. But there might be other issues that I didn't address in that inspection. So my main concern was getting the hoop houses inspected and permitted because they had electrical to them and were very hazardous, in my opinion.
So, Madeline, are there, there are other issues right now that are outstanding that he has not responded to in any way, in any way, other than the hoop houses? I had the impression there were three things, but I don't know where I got that.
The resolution.
Oh, nothing.
The. The registrant did not apply for a grading permit, and I don't know what happened with the unhoused generator. Did you ever get anything about that?
The generator was in the hoop house, which is a violation of our hoop house code that we put together. And it needs to be at least fifteen feet from it. I'm sorry, I don't recall what he did with the generator. If he moved it out of the hoop house or housed it.
Or housed it.
I just don't recall, I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay.
Sabrina, do you, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
His appeal letter says that, and that's received August twenty-one of this year, says that electrical and hoop houses were disassembled, and address process is pending, finalizing legal access, et cetera. And the photo you just gave us is dated June twenty-eighth, is that right?
That's correct.
Do you know whether between June twenty-eighth and August twenty-one, he took down the hoop houses?
I do not, because he did not submit any evidence of doing so to me. And he's not here today, I don't believe, I haven't seen him.
Do you have the correction list that he signed?
I can get it if you wanted to take a brief recess. I thought it was in the packet.
Okay.
But.
I'm sorry, you said that earlier, I apologize.
No, that's okay. I thought I had seen it on the website when I was reviewing his appeal letter. But I can certainly get copies for the commission if you'd like.
I think we're probably going to need it for these findings in the resolution because we don't have any other documentation to back this up. So at least if we have the correction notice, that will help us.
Yeah.
So, then my next question isn't. I, I can see where you're saying, hey, they're not permitted, I don't really care, but this is a huge amount of square footage. Is that, was that measured out at all? Between the hoop houses and the outdoor grow?
I don't recall, yeah, we didn't measure the outdoor grow at all. So like I said, there could still be potentially.
I got it, okay, so you found your issues that you wanted corrected right away, and that's what we, okay, got it, okay. Thank you, appreciate it.
And in your report that you put in the file, you say, I gave him a strict ten day deadline to make adequate effort to bring the property into compliance. So I take it that was, you needed proof within ten days
Yes.
that he was taking adequate steps?
Yes. And like I said in my report, permits can't necessarily be obtained within ten days, and I recognize that, but he needed to show good faith effort, and as far as I'm concerned, he has not. Hence the recommendation for denial.
Thank you.
All right. So if you would like to go and see if you can locate that correction notice, that would be great. And while you're doing that, I would like to hear from the, he's not here? Is there anybody here representing Mr. Garner? No representation.
I'll be right back.
Is Sharnell, is Sharnell representing? Thank you, appreciate that.
While she's gone. The, the statement, I gave him a strict ten day deadline to make adequate effort seems immediately kind of getting into our, you know, estoppel sort of a problem area. If there's very clear things that he has not done and has not made good faith efforts, I don't know that we need to have all the other violations that are in here, and we could just set forth those violations that are clear, and he hasn't done anything about them, and.
If, if she's going to come back with that evidence on the correction notice that he signed and he didn't support documentation to clear it up, I'm not sure I want to remove them. But if they're, if they're in violation, they're in violation, and they should be in the resolution.
But I think he, as I understand it, he did provide photographic evidence of. I, I, what I'm trying to do is get past any murkiness and just get, nail things down.
Do you have evidence that any of these items in the resolution have been corrected as of today?
I only have the emails from Sabrina. I don't have evidence, no.
So, and nowhere in the emails that he sent Sabrina, did any of these items in the resolution get fixed or corrected or photographed submitted, so it's all still relevant?
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, according to the staff report, the photos submitted on April twenty-fourth showed adequate fencing and a certificate posted.
Yeah, right.
What we don't know is what the photos of April eleven showed. And we don't know what the photos of May third showed, because they're not in the packet.
And I never received any of that information.
I thought I might just stick with the things that are very clear, clearly still in violation.
But I thought I heard what remained to be done was the permits for the hoop houses, and nobody knew about the generator. And I would like to see the correction notice myself.
Yeah.
Because I'd like to see what it says.
I think for future use, that's an essential part of the package.
I'm trying to decide what to do here because I can't really move forward, we have no other presenter. I could go to public comment, but, and then just not close, having Sabrina come back? Or do, I think we should wait until that evidence is here? Can we take a break for a minute? Yeah, let's just take a five minute break so everybody can stand up and exercise their legs. Otherwise, you can just sit here and stare at us, and that's not fun.
So this is the Calaveras County Code Compliance Cultivation Site Inspection and Correction List for APN zero one two dash zero one two dash zero three three, registration two zero one six seven nine nine. It is signed by issuing officer Sabrina Cable on March twenty-second, 2017. The following corrections need to be made to the property registered as outdoor. Has three plus hoop houses with lights, check with planning to change to mixed light, and permit hoop houses or remove hoop houses. Second item, camping on property, stated no one would be staying on property on application with the registration paperwork. Third, no fencing must have six foot fence around cultivation site. No posting must be posted at all entrances to grow site. No address posted. Hazardous electrical cords. Unhoused generator. Junk and debris littering the property. Grading, contact Public Works for grading permit. No light pollution. Ten days to comply beginning today. It is up to you to contact code enforcement when repairs are made. Refer to planning's website for specifics given, for specifics on code requirements given to, and then it is signed by the applicant.
So this has, it's a very clear statement that compliance, ten days to comply, given the beginning today. Did you soften that by saying you have to, to show me adequate effort, or?
Well, I told him that the permits wouldn't be pulled in ten days from application to inspection to final in ten days. I knew that, so that was my one caveat to that.
That was the one caveat?
Yeah.
Okay, so as far as fencing, everything else, he had ten days to comply?
Correct.
And can you go down through this list and tell us what he did comply with?
I apologize that the pictures he sent me are not saved. I believe what happened was I saved his email, and the pictures didn't transfer over, and so I don't have those to refer back to. But he did show that the trailers, all but one trailer was removed and placed into dead storage. He had torn down an unpermitted hoop house that was there when he bought the property. And he cleaned up the junk and debris, and he put a fence around the cultivation area. That's what I can remember, he corrected.
So.
Trailer fencing.
So the first two things, basically, he took care of, like camping on property?
Oh, and, and he corrected, he changed his registration to mixed light with the planning department. He also did that.
Okay. As far as the posting, you're not?
Um, I believe he did post his registration as well.
So hazardous electrical cords, the generator, you're not sure whether he?
I can't recall, I'm sorry.
Okay. Junk and debris?
He made a good faith effort to clean up the junk and debris.
I mean, I'm, I'm just.
So we're going back to your original.
That's, I'm just trying to.
I see it, okay.
Trying to figure it out.
Well, I see it. Well, I see it.
Okay, so, and the grading permit, do you have any indication?
Well, he had said he was having trouble working with Public Works. So I can't...
You don't, you don't...
I didn't base my recommendation for denial on that. I didn't have enough information regarding that, and I still don't.
Okay, so, let's see, where on here do we deal with the hoop houses? Oh, I see, the three-plus hoop houses. Okay, permit hoop houses or remove hoop houses, that's the big blank.
Correct.
And no sign that he's applied for a permit?
No, he has not applied for a permit. And he stated in his appeal letter that he tore them down, but no evidence was ever submitted to support that. And he's not here to show that, any evidence. And as I said, you can read, I told him, it is up to him to contact me when the repairs are made, which he failed to do.
And hazardous electrical cords were, that was going into the hoop house, correct?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay, so that, and the hoop houses, we have no idea of whether he's corrected that or not?
It says no address posted, why does he need an address?
The address has to be posted for the urgency ordinance.
No, just, there's, it's in the ordinance, and it's funny, we haven't come across this before.
He didn't have a legal address, but we've seen people post their APN, just any way that we can identify the site to know that we're at the correct site.
So they could use the APN number?
As far as code is concerned...
That's how, you can tell what's there.
He might have a different answer, but just a way to identify the property.
But did he post any kind of an address?
No, he had nothing, no. We didn't know we were at the right spot until we got up to that.
Did he fix that?
Yeah, I believe he posted the APN. But like I said, without the pictures, Mr. Wooster, I wouldn't be confident in saying for sure one way or the other.
Okay, so for sure, there's nothing on the record that he's taken any steps to get permits for the hoop houses? He did change his registration that would be consistent with that, and he has claimed but have supplied no proof that he has torn down the hoop houses?
Correct.
Okay. And that is certainly enough for me.
Okay. So, why don't we go ahead and let you sit down for a second and see if there's any public comment on this one? Does anybody have any public comment? Nope. Okay, and I'm going to take it, there's not going to be any rebuttal. It's okay. So I'm going to bring it back to the commissioners, close the hearing, and start deliberations here.
I would ask that this become part of the record.
Absolutely. Is anybody going to have any further questions for Sabrina? Because I know she has a big schedule ahead of her today that she needed to...
I do not.
Okay.
I don't think so.
Thank you, we appreciate you showing up. Sorry it took us so long to get there. All right, so...
I'd like to do a denial based on
The hoop houses.
The hoop houses and the electrical cords for the hoop houses. And not make findings as to whether or not he has corrected any of these, but just not include that as part of...
Do you know how amazing it would have been if I'd have just agreed with you from the beginning?
Anytime.
No, can't do that, we've got to debate it. All right, so I know that Commissioner Wooster's still doing his homework, but Commissioner says, "Did you have any questions in the meantime, or do you have any things you'd like to add, say, remove"?
Well, I think we can remove one... Two. Right?
We could quickly own us on Peter and say, if all we want to do is deny on the basis of the hoop houses and the electrical cords going to the hoop houses, what would you do with the resolution?
Five, we don't know if it was corrected. Okay, and the evidence? So we need to correct the evidence too. Commissioner Wooster, did you have additional information you wanted to add or remove?
No, it seems to me that the basis for denial should be the unpermitted hoop houses. I'm not seeing that in the draft resolution.
I'm not either, and all I'm seeing is it documented under the evidence.
Why don't we recess for lunch?
Okay.
I will work with Madeline to come up with the revised resolution that... And as I understand it, it's the generator. There's no documentation that the generator was corrected, and the hoop houses.
And electrical.
I think she said that maybe they moved the generator out. There was a little...
But she said no electrical permit was pulled, and that was her biggest concern, is the electrical running.
Right, so the electrical, the hoop house and the electrical, and perhaps leave the generator alone. There might be photographs or something showing that.
He may have pulled the generator out of the hoop houses, but that doesn't mean he put it in a house.
No, that's true.
Right.
But whether there was a photograph, I mean, possibly there was a photograph showing a generator in a house.
That's what the problem is, is that she can't remember if there was a photograph. Everything else, she was remembering the photograph, but not on that. And without that evidence, if he could have submitted it in those photos, it's kind of tricky. Because it was given to her, but she doesn't have them.
If we have a finding about a generator, and then there's an appeal to the board of supervisors, and there's a picture of the generator, it might get problematic.
All right, so we'll let you guys do your homework during lunch?
So electrical, no electrical permit, or documentation of correcting the unauthorized electrical wiring, and no permit for hoop houses. Okay.
I mean, as far as we know, the last photograph we have is June 28th, and the hoop houses are still there.
Yes.
And there's been no evidence submitted by the applicant that he disassembled them and took them out.
All right, we will adjourn to lunch and be back in about five minutes to one, and we've got a tight schedule ahead, so we're going to try and get real tight.